All right, we'll call to order this the Monday, February 22nd, 2021, meeting of the Ellisville Town Council. Chief Corman, would you like to do the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marshall?
Our heavenly Father, we come before you again tonight, and we thank you so much for this little town. We thank you for the many blessings you bestowed on it. We just thank you for all the interest we have in this town, and we ask to continue to lead and guide us in a way that please be. We ask to be with those that have lost loved ones, we ask to be with those that are facing surgery, we ask to be with them and keep them a clear mind and an understanding that a doctor will do his job. Anyway, ask these things in Jesus's name, amen.
Sandy Rowcall, please.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Dan Swafford?
Here.
Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, February 8th, 2021.
So move.
Motion, take your pick on the second, Sandy, whenever you're ready.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Abstained, since I wasn't there.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Action pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So move.
Oh, second.
Motion is second, Sandy.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Under resolutions tonight, we have resolution 04-2021 to write off uncollectible utility accounts.
This is a list of accounts that have moved or whatever that we cannot make contact to get the payment. So those counts just need to be written off as uncollectible.
Okay, do you know the total of those?
Yes.
Council discussion concerning resolution 04-2021.
Sandy, how old are those? Are they just a year old or are they older?
They go back to 2017. I mean, is that right?
Yeah, there are a few in there.
Yeah.
Okay. And so there's just no, no way of collecting, I mean?
Yeah, they've tried and, you know, these are usually someone who's left owing a small amount, and they move out of their house or rental and don't leave a forwarding address. And they, the girls try really hard. They look on the internet and Facebook, and these are just some that we haven't been able to find.
Okay, and that was my next question. We don't use a collection agency. We use our own staff, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a reason why we don't go through a collection agency or?
We've just never discussed that. So there is a government program, I believe it's called TREC, and they will do collections for municipalities. So if that's something you're interested in, we can, I'll definitely get that information together for you.
It just seems four thousand's a lot of money, and we do this every year. I really can't remember how much it has been in the past, but might be something to look.
I don't think we do this every year. It's been a few years since we've done this. We have the canceled checks that, you know, don't clear the bank that we. Yeah, we do that every January 1st, but it's been a pretty long time since we did these collectibles. Amber, do you know was the last time about 2014?
I think we did it in 2018 for accounts that were older than 2017.
You don't know how much those were by any chance? I mean, just curious.
I don't know that off the top of my head. I could look, though.
Okay, don't worry about it. I was just curious what, you know, if we're losing a few thousand every year, or every year is what I was concerned about, but.
Well, that'd come out about a little over a thousand dollars a year.
Right. Something to think about, I guess. I don't know what kind of nightmare it would be to have a company like that, or if we would even want it.
Further council comments?
I do know that when the county went to that, the clerk's office, there is a lot of issues initially because they had gotten names confused with people, and they collected things back from 10 to 15 years ago. And it was, it was pretty bad, especially like for speeding tickets. I know we're not dealing with the same thing here, but depending how far back they'd go, there may be some people 10 years ago that haven't heard from us, and all of a sudden, we're knocking on the door saying you owe us X amount of money plus interest.
Right. It's just something I thought about. I mean.
No, I understand. It's a good thought. But just letting you know, there's public blowback.
Any other council comments? Seeing none, motion from the council concerning this resolution.
Make a motion to approve resolution 04-2021 to write off uncollectible utility accounts.
Second.
Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Resolution 05-2021 to dispose of surplus property for police, street, and utilities departments, Department of Public Works.
Have a request. I got an email today late to add another police car for the police department. And if you wouldn't object, since I can add it, you know, after the fact, if we included in the motion, it's a 2010 Dodge Charger with the police department, and the VIN ends in 1802. If you do, you can choose to amend it, or you can choose to wait till the next time. I don't think it'll hurt either way.
It, it won't hurt either way. It's just an older car that we decided to go ahead and move out. We've got some, we got word the last couple of days that our newer car will be here sometime around the first of March. So we'd like to move the older four-wheel drive out and this older Charger out, so.
Council questions or comments? Okay, is, is there a motion concerning this resolution?
I move we approve resolution 05-2021 to dispose of surplus property for police, street, and utilities. And I would also like to amend it to include 2010. Was it a Charger, Jimmy? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes, a Charger, yeah.
Yeah, 2010 Charger.
Yeah, thank you.
I will second including the amendment.
Motion is second, Sandy, please.
Dan, Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next is our all ordinance under first reading. First is ordinance 20, I'm sorry, 2021-01 to terminate dormant funds.
These are funds that have been on our books for several years that we're no longer using. They've had a zero balance and no activity for a couple of years, and so I'm asking to terminate those funds.
Council questions or comments? Seeing none, this is on first reading, so it will come back as a legislative item on the next reading or on the next meeting. The next ordinance is ordinance 2021-02 to amend chapter 36 of Ellisville Town Code concerning payroll period and longevity.
Yes, we've been working, Scott and Mike Farmer and I, to try to reorganize our payroll a little bit. We've been holding some people back a little longer than we would like to. And so I've asked Darla to amend our code to make our pay period change from Friday through Thursday. It will now be Monday through Sunday. And then the other change is on the longevity. And we used to get longevity, $250 for every five years, and you only got it once every five years. And with the salary ordinance and the wage study, we'll now get that every year. So I just, these are changes to town code to allow that change. And Darla, if you have anything you'd like to add, feel free.
I don't have anything to add.
One thing, if I could add real quick, guys, and for the council, we have been, as a council, and I'll include all of us, plus all councils for the last 20 years, I guess, doing Sandy and Amber a huge disservice without knowing it. The way it's been set up under code, one of these two has had to be present every Wednesday when payroll is done, and literally trying to do payroll within two hours. And that's just, again, kind of unconscionable in our part that we haven't seen fit to change this or known about this because it puts these two in a real bind, particularly if one of them is on vacation, or one of them's sick, or take your pick of whatever else is happening in the world, and it just gives them zero time to make any type of emergency adjustments or any type of adjustments in their own life should something happen. And we've got to correct that. We just can't leave these two in the lurch because, quite frankly, if these, if both of, one or none of these ladies is present, nobody gets paid because nobody else in the rest of town has the ability to pay them. So we've got to have a couple of days worth of, I guess, dwell time would be a good, a good kind of analogy used to where if one of them is sick, there's a couple of days to get better, or there's, you know, some way for them to explain to somebody else within the town, here's the steps you take to make sure everybody gets paid. We've just run this so close to the wire for years and years and years. And frankly, for both of you, I apologize because I knew nothing about this until Sandy and I talked about it. It's, it's, like I said, kind of unconscionable that we've left you guys in that position. So this is kind of something we're trying to fix to make it not only better for the two of them, but also better for new hires and the rest of the employees to make it fair. Because as I understand it right now, there's about three different ways it's being done right now. So any other council comments, questions? Again, this is the first reading, so it will come back next meeting for action.
This just gives them more time to process it. For the employees, if there's any questions, we're not changing their payday. Is that correct?
That's correct. The payday will stay the same. We are having to do a little adjustment on some withholdings and.
Right.
We've worked that out with the employees and give them some choices. And so we, in the past, we turned the time sheets in on Wednesday, and employees pre-2010 have had to forecast what they were going to work on Wednesday and Thursday before the pay period actually ended. And we often had to make adjustments in the next pay period. So this will bring them all into being totally, they've worked their full cycle before they have to submit their time sheet.
Any other questions or comments? Moving along to ordinance 2021-03 to amend payroll dates and longevity dates, and ordinance 2020-26 and 2021 salary ordinance. I assume this is just follow-on legislation, Sandy?
Yes, this is just further explaining, explaining it in our salary ordinance, the change, and it affects the ending date of our last pay period. It moves it up one week. The salary ordinance said January 1 through December 30th, and the withholding period will make it go from January 1 through December 26th. So it's just going to move up four days.
Questions, comments about that? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. There are no ordinances under second reading. There is no old business. There's no flood report listed, but Mike, do you want to talk at all about preparations for, I guess we're calling it the great thaw that's going on right now?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, there is some work being done to the building that we're getting ready to demo at first in Vine Street. We're waiting for a second entry into the flood report from Christopher Burke. The preparation in the building, they're taking the roof off, and they are going to repurpose the roof structure and the supports, and they're going to take the overhead doors and repurpose them as soon as they're out of there. It may be as early as Thursday when that happens. Then we'll begin preparations, knock the building down, and it'll be sooner than later. So once we have it down, then all we'll be waiting for is a plan by Christopher Burke to begin construction of the shelving project. So it's about all I got right now.
Okay, and we do want to encourage people to keep the drains clear. If they have drains in front of their house, correct? Or we care of all that?
Yeah, we do. We cleaned all the town drains before what we thought might be a good rain. And the snowmelt's really helping. We have sandbags. We'll be keeping sandbags in front of the blue building on Matthews Drive for anybody that thinks they need them, in case we have a big rain. Right now, we don't have anything forecast. That changes pretty quick. So other things that people might want to be conscious of, if they've had frozen pipes in their house and they know it, they should be thawing out in the next day or two. And so we have 24-hour service where we can come out and do an emergency shut-off for them if they find they have water leaking into their house, so it's all I have.
All right, any council questions, comments concerning the flood report? Any public questions concerning the flood report? I'm sorry, William, did I interrupt you?
I was just going to say, I think the town has done a great job handling the snow, both in streets and in sewer and drainage.
Agree completely. Okay, seeing no more in the flood report, we'll move to new business. The first is the partnership agreement for grant of easement and recreational trail signage between town of Ellisville and Monroe County.
This was presented to me by County Attorney Margie Rice, and I believe either Denise or Amber did a search for me, and there was a resolution that the town council approved probably a couple of years ago, authorizing Scott Oldham to sign any necessary documents to transfer the easement to Monroe County. But this is going to be part of the trail system, and the county has asked the town to transfer a section that's over there in the Stewart pasture. And you have a diagram that's at the back of the agreement. But in any event, the agreement just says that, in a nutshell, the town agrees to grant an easement to the county of this particular area. The county will maintain the trail. The town agrees not to put anything on the trail that will interfere with it, such as, you know, bushes, trees, all that kind of thing, utility lines, except for the utility lines that are already there. And that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, council questions? Any public questions on this one? Seeing none, back to the council for potential action.
I move. Go ahead. I was trying to figure on my agenda, but go ahead.
Same here. I'll move to approve the partnership agreement for grant of easement and recreational trail signage between the town of Ellisville and Monroe County.
Second.
Motion is second, Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next on the agenda, the Republican Party requests approval to use the Ellisville Town Hall Meeting Room on March 6, 2021 for a Republican Reorganization Caucus.
You want me to take this one?
Please.
All right. So everybody know, every four years, each of the major political parties in the state have to do a reorganization for chairman, vice, secretary, and treasurer. I'm on the town council, but I'm also the chairman of Monroe County Republican Party. And the first reorganization we had when I was chair, we had one at the showers building. The second time, we had it at the Monroe County Courthouse. And I think it'd be very fitting to include Ellisville now into the mix also, since we have the facilities. This year, a little bit of different party rules, which would comply with the Board of Health rules. Anybody present to vote has to have a mask. If you do not, you cannot come in to the facility. And I have to have an action plan submitted to the County Board of Health five days prior. So if everybody's worried about social distancing and stuff, we'll have to comply even by our party rules, or it's considered a defective caucus. But this is more of a function of government situation. It's not a party rally or place to solicit funds. It is just a reorganization, and one we've done in both the city of Bloomington and the county courthouse of Monroe County.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Comments from the public? And back to the council.
I move that we approve the Republican Party's request to use Ellisville's Town Hall Meeting Room on March 6, 2021 for Republican Reorganizing Caucus.
Motion in several seconds, Sandy, when you're ready.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
I'll abstain.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Next is Department of Public Works request to purchase, I'm sorry, E35 Bobcat Compact Excavator and 30-foot flail mower, 30-inch flail mower attachment, apologize.
Yeah, that's me. Michael Farmer, Ellisville Utilities. This request comes to you due to the fact that we wanted to buy a flail motor for our E35 Bobcat Mini Excavator that we now own. After looking into rigging it to our current piece of equipment and retrofitting the chassis of the excavator to allow for safety considerations using a flail mower, a mower, which is basically a bush hog that we put on the end, and instead of digging with it, it allows you to reach out and, and do easement clearing. We specifically wanted it for easement clearing and cleaning up the creeks along the trail, the banks of the creek and the Stewart property. And as we obtain more trail, we'll use it even more. So the piece of equipment that we now have with the retrofits, it was going to cost us quite a few thousand dollars to do the retrofit. And we got to talking to Bobcat, who now is in Ellisville, and they mentioned that they could, because of the condition our machine is that we have, they suggested we might want to trade in, and they would give us a handsome amount of money for our equipment. We'll get a trade-in. The piece of equipment we now have is eight years old. So we'd get a brand-new machine, and it would be rigged for safety as well as plumbed for this flail mower. And so I, after we looked at it and I talked to the supervisors, we recommend that we move forward with the project. Bobcat wants $21,880.28 to purchase the machine, and then an additional, additional $6,932.75 to get the flail mower. And once we have this piece of equipment, we'll be using it still in the 2030s. So it'll last us a long time. It comes with a warranty, and we just think it's a good idea. We did get a second quote from Westside Tractor, but they were more than $10,000 more than the quote Bobcat gave us, and I think they really wanted our business since they just moved to town. And so I recommend that we move forward with the purchase. We have the money in Equipment Replacement Fund, and we're going to split the machine half to water and half to sewer. Each will pay $10,940.14. And then the flail mower, because the street department, Department of Public Works, however you want to say it, they'll be using it as well. So we're splitting it three ways, and we all have money and funds that will, will pay for this. Question?
Council questions? Is there a motion from the council concerning this purchase?
I'll make a motion for the Department of Public Works to purchase an E35 Bobcat Compact Excavator and a 30-inch flail mower attachment.
Second.
Motion is second, Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, moving to privilege of the floor. Anyone having business for the council that's not part of the normal agenda? Seeing none, supervisor comments?
I'll speak. I just wanted to say the street department and the utilities crews that worked under Department of Public Works, they really put out for the town during the recent snowstorms. And they worked until everyone was safe and it was easy to ingress, egress Ellisville. And so they did a really good job, and then the crews that come in the next day when they all went home, I believe that was on President's Day, they finished the job by cleaning the parking lots, sidewalks, and all the government buildings. And so we were well-covered, and it's through hard work and a lot of skill, a lot of accumulated skill by the street department, that they know how to take care of us when there's a big snowstorm. So thumbs up to those guys and the utility crews, and I really like working with this group. They're, they're hard workers, and they know what they're doing.
I've got something.
Yes, sir.
The, I brought in extra staff to staff the fire stations during the height of the storm. And we also made sure, the crews did, made sure the parking lot was always ready to go because not only were we a warming station in case we needed it, we also are an alternate site for the county's emergency operations center in case they would have to move or come out. So the, the fire stations, both stations were always ready to do that, and our crews, you know, stayed up late and got up early to try to keep ahead of it the best they could. So they've done a great job, and are proud to say that we didn't have a lot of strenuous emergencies. Really, we're kind of run-of-the-mill type emergency calls during that time period. So I want to thank the public for being mindful. There wasn't very many people on the road in Ellisville during a lot of that time. So it was really, considering it all, it was, it was a good event, so. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Other supervisor comments? Town manager comments? Seeing none, council comments?
I'd just like to follow on what Mike spoke of. Really proud of the guys on the Public Works, Street Department, whatever it's called, I keep forgetting. But our roads in Ellisville look fabulous, and they're always in great shape, and you guys just do an awesome job. And Mike, I do appreciate all you firemen going out, and you guys have always done that, taking care of your own lots. And I was just curious, did we have anyone come in for the warming station?
No, we didn't have anybody come in, so.
Okay, but still, an awesome thing you guys are doing. Keep up the good work.
Okay, I want to add one more thing. We, since the street department, the vehicles do have our old listening frequency. They can listen to the fire frequency, and we had somebody had a broken leg in the middle of the street. And the first thing, the first person there was the street department, and they had. And they had a truck make sure the road was plowed for us to get all the way up there and also block traffic. Because this person was laying in the middle of the street. So they were close by and they took care of, you know, just blocking the traffic off and made sure we had a good path to get the ambulance and the fire truck getting out. So it's one of those great things of small towns.
That's awesome.
Mr. President, along those same lines, I'd like to thank the street department utilities. They, we had zero accidents through that time. You know, our streets were paid, or of course were paid, but they had them cleaned off and we had no problems at all. So we really appreciate that from the police department perspective.
I, I will note incredibly straight lines the street department got with this snow. I mean, very, very straight lines. And the one that didn't get any thanks, who I will just tell you worked his tail off through the whole thing is our town manager, Mr. Farmer. He was on top of absolutely everything when any of the council had a question or had a comment, had whatever else that had already been taken care of hours before it ever came to any of our minds. So Mike, from us, thank you and congratulations. Clark, did you have a comment? Okay, sorry your hand raised, didn't know. With that, is there any more council comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Meaning adjourned at 7:03.
Thank you all.
Night.